Let's call the meeting to order. Good evening. The day is August 22, 2013, for the Hyde Park School District's Board of Education, Special Board Meeting here at FDR High School. We can have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I believe there are no agenda modifications. So we'll move on to adopting the agenda as stands. I may have a motion to adopt the agenda.
To move.
Second.
May I have a motion and a second? All those in favor? All those opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion passed. All right. Grigis, you want to say something first?
Well, just as we go into the presentation, I did want to say that we added, we had a placeholder in our calendar to have a meeting. Typically, it was if we had an emergency personnel or something that was pressing. And Wayne came to me one afternoon with the tax levy as it stands. And I just determined that it was a big enough conversation that we needed some time to talk about it as a board. And just for full disclosure, we can't have a board meeting, you know, behind the scenes. So it was an important enough topic, and the fact that we have to set the tax levy next week, and we have a number of presentations on the board agenda, I thought it was worth bringing everyone together just so that we had a chance, A, to examine what exists, what our situation is, to have a conversation about it, and knowing that there are some options to at least discuss them and have this in a public format. So I really appreciate everybody pulling together on a hot August night for an extra board meeting. So thank you very much.
Now that we've kind of scared everybody out there in video land as to why we're here, but it is necessary. We did. We have put a lot of thought into what we're going to present, and I think we can start with our presentation with Mr. Dirk Kurlander.
Great, thanks. And I too appreciate you coming out tonight to hear, you know, what our situation is. I just want to direct you, in case you haven't, and I'm sure most of you have, because I've spoken with some of you, there is an information packet that I'll be referencing. And basically, that's the hardline data, raw data, that brings this presentation together. So from time to time, you'll see me reference some of the things that are in there. So if you kind of just want to pull that packet or pull it up on your screen, the first document that's there is the final equalization rates. And it's highlighted for town of Hyde Park, and that's something really the core of our conversation tonight. The next document is the tax levy as is, without any changes. And that's the calculation of tax rates.
Wayne, can you put the mic closer?
Sure. The second, the next sheet would be a scenario if we were to do something with fund balance. I'll discuss that in full detail. And what the tax rates were comparison. And then the tax cap. And that'll be, you know, really the end of our discussion and where we open up a good conversation. So with that being said, next week, we do set the tax levy, and that sets the tax bills and many things into place, as you can imagine, and the bills are sent out quickly thereafter. We're a little late this year on getting the tax levy set, and that was due to, you know, how the board meetings were scheduled. So this is really helpful to have this time to discuss. So with that being said, I'll go right into it with regards to the equalization scenario for 1314. For many weeks, you know, I started looking for this in early July, I noticed that the town of Hyde Park's tentative equalization rate was a big jump. So I had a lot of time to think about this and work on it. So luckily, throughout the summer, you'll see that the town of Hyde Park's equalization rate went from .56 to .62. What does that mean? Basically, that means the number that's divided to come up with a market value, or a true market value for any given home, is that much of a difference for Hyde Park, which is 50% of our tax roll. And it'll make more sense as we move along. According to individuals from New York State, because we researched this, and our local office of Real Property Services, what the situation is, is that the houses in Hyde Park are declining at a much faster rate than our surrounding towns in the district and the county and the state. I kind of looked, you know, throughout. There are a lot of other areas in the same situation as I began speaking with people on this. And as we know, Hyde Park hasn't had a reassessment in quite a few years. What does this do? Due to the accelerated decline in market values in Hyde Park, the equalization rate changed 6% and caused the tax rates to be inequally skewed. So if you look to the first tax calculation sheet, you'll notice that the rate change in column number 10, that's the first sheet, first set of sheets.
You know, Wayne, we can't get on our computers, and we don't have hard copies, so just...
Okay. So basically, what happened is you have Hyde Park with a negative tax rate increase, and all of the other surrounding towns, which include Clinton, Pleasant Valley, Poughkeepsie, and Ryanback, with a rate change that's three times their normal, what it normally should be. That's the inequity that this has caused. Hyde Park's tax rate went negative, and the four other towns have to make up for that swing. So basically, because the market values have reduced so much, the equalization rate follows. And then we, you know, the district really has very little to no control. We get the raw numbers from the county, we get the raw numbers from the state, and we put them into, you know, a formula, and this is what it came up with. Kind of an inequity that's created. And the district really doesn't have any control. So what did we do? What can, you know, we looked at this and tried to think, well, what can we do? How can we put a tax rate out there for four of our towns that's really high, and then for one of our towns that's really low? So we wanted to help reduce a little bit of this inequity. So what we learned is this, is that if we were to do something to help this situation out, we have to do it equitably across the five towns. So the tax rate in Hyde Park would go, the tax rate increase would go even further down. So instead of a .58 negative increase, it would go to 3.58 negative increase. But so would the other towns. So all the towns on the next sheet, so instead of being a nine or a 10%, would become a six or a seven, and the Hyde Park tax rate change would be negative three. So we did learn that each of the five towns would get it equally. And then we researched the effect that it would have on the tax cap. And basically, we're looking into 2014-15. We know very little about what is going to happen in 1415, but we have our formula. We have two years of experience with the tax cap, and we ran a scenario with the information that we have. The only thing I did adjust was the CPI, and we adjusted that down because the trend for CPI right now is at about 1.65 rather than 2% where it was last year. So that has, you know, another conversation that we'll have to have, you know, when we get the tax cap throughout the budget season.
Wayne, does CPI mean Consumer Price Index?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
A fund balance contribution this year would cause a large gap, and that's what we learned, because we ran the scenario, you know, ran it by our, you know, our professionals, looked at it a hundred ways to the wind. And at the end of it, what we found out is that if we were to put this $1.4 million, you know, contribution towards the tax levy this year, it would really hurt us in 2014-15. And in fact, we would only be able to increase the tax levy by $300,000. This year, we increased the tax levy by just under $2 million, so it kind of makes sense, you know, with regards to contracts. And we all know that the increases for salaries and benefits alone would be far, you know, far much higher, or a much higher amount than $300,000. And the net result of making this contribution now would be significant cuts to our budget in 1415, which we were trying to avoid, you know, at any cost. So trying to keep things smooth and even, doing this, it's great for right now, and it helps everybody out, but in the long run, it's, you know, it has a negative effect on, you know, future budget years. So what we're left with tonight is a decision, and that's to set the tax levy as is next Thursday night, with no fund balance contribution. The inequity remains as it should be, based on the circumstances. Or the alternative, you know, as we discussed, is to appropriate fund balance. And basically, what we'd be doing is we'd be setting a 0% tax levy increase. Tax levy increase, rate increase, two different things. So it doesn't mean that people are going to have a 0% rate increase. It just means that the tax levy from last year is 0% from the year before, basically. But rates are different, you know, based on everybody's individual situation. That's where we are.
Wayne, I'd like to get this one point in. I'm not sure you made as clear as it could be. Had the equalization rate not changed, the tax rate, the tax levy for all five towns would have been exactly what, well, just slightly higher than what we said it would be when the budget went out. And I think that's important. It would have been 3% all across. We said 273. So it's pretty darn close, considering all the factors that are involved, that we don't have all the facts when we're actually doing the budget. The state, in its wisdom, changed the equalization rate, and the higher it goes, the lower the value of the property. You got me involved right from the get-go, and I've been thinking a lot about this. I don't see any way out of the box, other than to set the tax levy as is. And I know that's not a pleasant thought for the other four towns, but if we appropriate fund balance, we're basically going to put us in a 0%, I mean, 300,000 is almost zero in terms of an $80 million budget. And it will cause a spiral down, because we can't increase the budget next year. It'll have an effect on what we can do the following year and the following year after that. So I wish there was an option. I don't think this option two is a viable option for our district if we want to continue to provide for our students. So maybe Mr. Eggleton have a word for us when we go into public participation, but that's my take on it.
Wayne, on the equalization rates, have they been steady on the incline in the last two, three years?
This is the second year, and you'll see in the tax levy presentation, for Hyde Park for it to raise.
To raise.
It wasn't as significant last year. It did have the same effect, but not to this degree.
So there possibly exists that next year, again, may raise or at least stay flat. So we'd have the same scenario next year.
Yep.
No, Wayne, the equalization rate is produced and provided to us by the state. But it's not based on any attempt to do a, across-the-board reassessment of the district. It's simply based on, if I understand correctly, selective sales that they pick from the Hyde Park School District, comparing the actual sale value, which they then say is the real property value, to the assessed value, and looking at the discrepancy and saying, hey, these properties are selling even lower than what the assessed value was, or closer to, you know, the difference in the assessed value and the real property value is so different that the equalization rate needs to be changed. But, you know, in this market, in this time, you know, we're basically dealing with people that have to move, that are looking to get some money out of their properties before they move. So, you know, I think that the economy is driving the sales in this area to be based on those that can get some money out of it that are leaving the area. And it is not truly reflective of what the actual real property value was, that people were not selling under duress. Point one. Point two, and I asked you this question earlier, and I'd like to get an answer. I know you don't have the answer right now, but the question is, the Hyde Park district showed an increase in assessed value of over $6 million. So that's reflective of additional properties being put on the tax rolls or improvements on existing properties that are reflected in a higher assessment. My experience with this, based on a purchase some 40 years ago, where we were in the same circumstance, and Hyde Park had not reassessed in a good number of years. I bought the smallest house in a grouping of six houses. When I purchased the house, I was reassessed, and I, with the smallest house, I had the highest assessment, because what they did was, the assessment value was based on the sale price, independent of what the equalization rate was. So they continued to not only have an inequity, but they continued to make it a timeline inequity. The newer you purchase the house, the more likely is the gap between what your house is assessed at and what its real value is compared to what people that had the house 40 years ago or 30 years ago, or whenever the, most of us probably were in the house since the last assessment. But I can't say that for a fact unless we ask somebody over at the, in the town hall as to, you know, the town assessor, how was he assessing the property? At the time, what they did was they simply went to the county records and got a statement of public record of what the tax stamp was on the transfer. And the tax stamp value was based on the sale price of the item. So the higher the tax stamp cost you, the more you paid for the property. And it saved them issues because they didn't have to do any brain work. They just simply transferred it directly through a quick formula, put the value on it. And that also creates all sorts of inequities within the district, you know. Obviously, the only solution to this problem, to restabilize it and make it equitable cost aligned, based on what we're seeing here, is for the town to reassess the entire district at 100% value, like the other four towns are. And again, this is something that's not in the area of control of the town board, I mean, the school board.
I will say this, because these things do occur, absolutely do occur. It depends on what the assessor puts on, you know, if it is the stamp, in fact, like you said, or, you know, is it some other kind of calculation that they're making in conjunction with the equalization rate, or, you know, what the going market value is, or if the assessor came to that property and reviewed it before, you know, it was sold. So with that being said, the one thing I do know is the town offers a grievance day each year, and that's held in April. And, you know, just by the number of ones that come through my office, because we, you know, put these on agendas regularly, the, you know, the towns are very fair about making sure that if there is an inequity, like, you know, Mr. Duffy mentioned, that it is addressed and, you know, because we review them. If it looks like it's, you know, if it doesn't feel fair, that there really should have been, you know, a reduction in their assessment and a subsequent reduction in their taxes, you know, we kind of question it to the town assessors. And, you know, in most every single case, you know, if there is an inequity caused for any new home buyer, it wouldn't affect anybody that's been here for, you know, quite, you know, a long time, but it could affect somebody that's just purchased, you know, a new home in the area. And depending on which, you know, which method out of all the five towns that they use to, you know, establish their assessed value and therefore their market value. But there is, you know, a process where you can take five, you know, similar houses and, you know, and I'm not saying I want my tax shirts to come through the door, but there is a process in each of the towns. And I would, you know, suggest that if there are any community members out there that have this scenario, that they, you know, contact the local town supervisor's office in local towns and have that discussion, because that certainly is an issue that does occur from time to time.
So I want to make sure that we're all on the same page here. We're not talking about a situation where a given individual's assessment is incorrect or is unfair relative to their neighbors or someone else in the town where they live who has a home of roughly the same value. That is an issue that falls to the town tax officials. What we're talking about here is the fact that the state, through sampling methodology, has determined that the entire town of Hyde Park is losing property value faster than all of the other towns around us. And because of that, the taxable, the total taxable value has decreased for the town. So a few of the things that you said, Wayne, were absolutely correct and likely to inflame anybody that's paying attention. So I'd like to go back and revisit a couple of those. The first is that there is an inequity. However, it's not, it's an inequity of the system. It's not an inequity in the way we are managing it. We are controlling the budget of this school district very closely. We're watching every expense and examining each to make sure that it delivers the educational value that we expect. So the inequity is in the way the taxes are apportioned, not in the way that we are determining how much to tax the citizens. Something else you said, the rest of the towns have to make up the difference. And again, this is named specifically you. I just want to go back and look at some of the things you said. In context, that's, again, correct, because our portion of the tax levy fell off. The tax levy itself doesn't change. That's what the voters passed last spring, was the total tax levy. And so because of the formula, Hyde Park's contribution to that fell off, and therefore, simply through mathematical realities, the rest of the towns will wind up paying more. So don't think that, again, the school board is trying to tax other towns or districts at a higher rate. It's simply the way the math works. So having said that, I don't see how we can really consider applying surplus funds to this, this year's tax levy, simply because we can't afford to set ourselves up to minimize the increase for next year. And I dislike that reality. But if we set ourselves up to minimize the tax increase for next year to $300,000, we already know that that is going to set us up for a situation where we have to make drastic cuts in program. So what I do wonder is whether we can't take that surplus and apply it to the budget for the following school year. And in that way, give it back to the citizens and help lower the entire tax burden. Again, it's beyond our control to control any given town's contribution, but I think that that would be the best way to return those surplus funds to the taxpayers.
Okay. Anybody else have any thoughts?
Just a comment on Steve's.
Because we have to set, we have to set this by next meeting, which is next week.
I think Wayne wants to respond to some of the...
Okay. Just a comment, because we do have a Plan B, which you'll see when we roll out, you know, fund balance analysis is just one of the options. But there is a Plan B that does, you know, help to reduce future budgets. So that's exactly what we would be doing.
Wayne, just a question on assessments. Is Hyde Park unique to the area that they're not fully assessed as compared to all surrounding towns?
There are very few left.
For our district, yes.
Very few, you know, out of our five towns.
Oh, for our district, I know, but I mean, in general, the general area.
It's unique.
So is there an advantage for the, a disadvantage for the town to go for full assessment? It'd probably be financially a problem, right?
It's a good question, because we sat down.
That's why they haven't done it, it's expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, last year, probably 10, 11 months ago, we sat down with the representatives of the town, including the current supervisor, and asked specifically about that. And the estimate that they were working with was a cost of $800,000 to reassess the town of Hyde Park. And given that they are also subject to a tax cap, that is, you know, that would put them way over their budget. Now, having said that, and having at least a passing familiarity with the tax rates in the town, I think it would benefit the majority of the citizens of Hyde Park if there were a reassessment. I think that it's skewed, currently skewed, such that the lower cost pieces of real estate are paying a much larger portion of the tax levy than they should be.
But it wouldn't benefit the school district, though.
There would be no benefit to the district, but I think it would be a benefit to the citizens of the town.
Right.
The majority of the citizens of the town.
Steve, because I wasn't in that discussion, there is no way to phase it? Does it have to be done all at once? I mean, you could have equalization rate for part of the town, and, I don't know. I mean, if it's that expensive and they can't afford it, and it has to get done, then they got to figure out some creative way to get it done.
Well, that's, that's a good question. We never talked about that, but it sounds like a pretty complicated thing to do. The other approach would be to set aside...
By word.
Yeah, by word, or, you know, I wonder if they couldn't start, quote unquote, saving money.
Or start saving money.
Yeah, set aside money and, you know, a little bit every year until they, but these are town matters, and they've got real considerations. So I don't want to second guess their budgetary considerations. But from what I saw in an ad hoc analysis that I did, the vast majority of the homeowners in the town of Hyde Park would benefit from a reassessment, because the vast majority of the properties are in the price range, you know, in the lowest price ranges.
Right.
And they're overtaxed relative to the absolute highest cost.
Well, I don't know, was anybody else here besides myself owning property when they reassessed the last time?
No, but I, my experience when we bought our house was very similar to yours, in that the newer properties of equal value in my neighborhood are paying much more tax than the older properties are.
The thing is, and the point I wanted to make was, at the time that they came through with this reassessment, one of the selling points or justifications of that was that they were going to take all of the physical information, square footage, type of foundation, type of kitchen, type of carpeting, all the things that are used to calculate the replacement cost of a house if it burnt down. The reason being, they said, once we had this information, we could do basically a reasonable reassessment every three years by just applying a formula to the information we have gathered at the time we did the reassessment. I assure you that equity reassessment never occurred once, and no mention of that capability has been made about it since then.
Okay.
If you go to somebody now and you say, I want to build a house, they're going to ask you, what kind of square footage, what kind of a kitchen you want, what kind of a bathroom you want, where do you want tile, where do you want hardwood floors? And they'll come out with their estimate based on that figures, which supposedly is supposed to be the real, real property value. What's it cost to build your house today?
All right. I don't think we can solve that problem. Would be nice if we could, but that's not what we're here for. I would like to know if anybody else has a different opinion on moving forward. I have suggested that we do as is. I heard Mr. Midmire agree. I didn't hear everybody else, so.
I'm fine with that. I mean, if we don't...
I agree.
All right, so Wayne...
I feel it's the lesser of two evils. I'm not happy with any of the choices, but it is the lesser of evils.
No, I don't think anybody's happy, no. I don't think anybody's happy, no. All right, then let's move on. You have your marching orders, so... We now have new business, 5.1, approved resolution on reserve recommendations. And the recommended action is, resolve the Board of Education of the Hyde Park Central School District, hereby authorizes the funding of the district-approved reserves with the excess of 4% from unassigned fund balance at June 30th, as of June 30th, 2013. The allocation of such fund balances will be determined subsequent to June 30th, 2013, after setting the tax lobby, utilizing audited numbers and the recommendation of the district auditors. What this means is that any excess fund balances left over after the 4% that we're allowed to keep, we will be determining into which reserves this money will go. So, can I have a motion for 5.1?
So moved.
Second.
We have a movement and second. All those in favor? Opposed? No abstains? That motion carries. Item six is for upcoming meetings. Now, our next meeting is at the district office, Thursday, August 29th, 2013, at 6:00 PM. Let me, the time again, 6:00 PM, not 7:00 PM. All right? The, we do not put a public participation in here, but Mr. Eggleston, if you would like to talk to me after the meeting, that would be fine. Okay.
Thank you for coming.
And thank you for coming, yes. I would entertain a...
Somebody's got to tip you on.
Yeah, that's right. And you're up to it, right? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor? Opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for coming out.